Hi, I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting to order on Tuesday, February twentieth at six thirty P M. First thing we have is public comments. Hearing none, we'll move on to police. We're gonna review the burglar alarm ordinance and begin adoption progress. So Mike?
Yes, so I had some minutes to do to net the ordinance as we discussed and was previously approved, just lay out the way it should be. So we have the ordinance, the new schedule, even fines, the letter that we would like to send out, the farmers, and the registration slash renewal paperwork that, um, yeah, it's all, as we discussed in the previous meeting, I was approved. We just started to get that adopted, signed, worn.
I don't know. If somebody else is, okay, so I can do this now. Board members, did everybody have a chance to look at the burglar alarm ordinance?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. I looked at it. I thought it was what we agreed to. Um, anybody have any questions or comments, concerns about it? All right, somebody like to make an emotion, a motion to adopt the burglar alarm ordinance?
I make a motion that we adopt the burglar alarm ordinance, ordinance, ordinance.
Second, second advice, Scott. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Neatness. Thank you. That was good. Uh, anything else, Mike?
Um, if you'd like a quick update on the cruisers.
Oh, I saw some bills, yes.
Okay, yeah, he stole the house. That's correct. And that's just two cars, so.
Want to give me that one for us to sign, Jen? So, yes, it looks like it's getting expensive. So, uh, Jeanette, Jeanette and I talked briefly before the meeting. Uh, she's gonna try to submit, uh, under insurance to see if we can get anything back. It's worth a try, right? For, because the tank, the fuel tank, that was very expensive. That was four thousand dollars.
And then the other thing I kind of have, the, um, I don't know if anyone actually even tried, uh, uh, the earmarks for the Harpo funds, but the radio that I was buying for the new cruiser, was pretty short, the price of it down to a dollar. Extra that, on what I was.
Way to save money.
Earmark for it.
Nice. Right. Is that it? Joe, do you want to try to come in and sign the, uh, burglar ordinance?
I can tomorrow at about four o'clock.
Will that work, Jeanette?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And so you're not.
I'm sorry.
Yes, all the classes that we have to warn.
Right. Right. But he should have, the more names on it, the better, I think. Okay, is that it for police? Or? Next, we have assessors. Uh, we are to approve the certificate, no appeal or suit pending for the grand list twenty twenty-three. So I guess there's no appeal or suit pending. Does somebody want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion. Is it you all signed it or just you?
No, everybody.
To approve. I make a motion that the, um, that we approve and sign the certificate um, for the grand, of the grand list twenty twenty-three. There's, and then just for the note, there's no appeal or suit pending.
Second.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
And this, you can sign this too, Joe, if you come in tomorrow. Can you sign that? Back to Jeanette. All right. Travis, highway update on transfer station in the highway department.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, um, so I'll start with the transfer station. I have been working with Kevin Stein, and, uh, I think we're gonna try to do a six-month trial run for a cardboard container um, at the transfer station. I went down and met with, with Bob at, um, at the Wyndham Solid Waste this morning, and, you know, we're gonna work out something and they're gonna, they're gonna give us the box, and we're gonna, we're gonna, him and I'll hash out what, what trucking might be, but cardboard is almost up to a hundred and twenty a ton, so, you know, we, we could see a little bit of profit on this, but it's gonna cut way back on our single stream recycling that we're dumping for. Yeah, so, so we're working on something. Um, I'm, I think I'm gonna put it, you know, I'm gonna put it out, out behind the transfer station there somewhere, close where Ken can kind of police it a little bit, but that'll cut back a lot, and I think, you know, we're gonna give it a shot. So.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let you guys know we were gonna try to do a little trial run with the cardboard, so.
Great. I'm happy we're giving it a trial run. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Joe?
Yes, I have a question. So you're saying we get a hundred and twenty dollars a ton for the cardboard?
That's what, that's what it's up to, yes. That's what they're willing to pay for it.
Versus two fifteen a ton per single stream?
That we're paying, that we're paying to get rid of. Yes, so, so it could be, it could be a, a wash on the truck. It, it'll, it'll be close with the trucking. But you'll see that much, you'll, you'll see quite a bit of savings on the, on the backside, because that stuff, you won't be paying two something to get rid of it for the single stream.
So my question is, is this something we're working through Casella with, or this is a separate?
Nope. Wyndham Solid Waste.
And Casella doesn't have a problem if we were taking that.
It's not their transfer station.
I'd like what you think, you.
It's not, yeah, it's not. There, it's not, it's not a contract. They don't, they can't tell us what we're gonna do in our transfer station. Oh, really? Yeah.
Good.
Is that it, Joe?
Well, the other thing too is what that's gonna do is it should also tie up our tonnage going into it. If we don't have that cardboard that's taking up all the blades and spaces, so.
Exactly.
Much tighter, compacted container, so it should.
Right.
Up the tonnage, so we should lose, not have so much on trucking for the tonnage.
Correct. Yep, yep. It, and this, it'll be, it, it's not a packing dumpster, so, you know, we'll have to fit in. I'll probably have it so that it's only open from front to back or back to front, you know. We'll work each cupboard, you know, as it fills up. That way you can fill it up at a good, you know, a good rate and get the most we can out of it. Yep.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, can we promote this? I hate to think about how much cardboard that I've been getting out to my, I use a private hauler, and I'd be delighted to bring that over along with the rest of my recycling and.
Well, why weren't you? Why weren't you? It should have been in the single stream.
Yeah, it was in the single stream, but I'm just saying, as I go through boxes, things like that, I have a fair amount of cardboard, and if we can get money from that, rather than paying to single stream it out. I mean, I'd like to have a lot of people in town be aware that, hey, this is a new feature.
Let's see how it starts up. Let's give it a couple of months, I'd say.
Yes, I agree.
You don't want to be backed up with people just coming, yeah, so let's just kind of sort it with the people who are now using the facility. Yeah, and then with, then, no.
It is a soft launch. Um, this is only one extra container that they have hanging around, so they're willing to let us have it for right now, so, you know, if, if things really pick up, we might, you know, we, we might see if they can't provide us with one or wanna buy one, you know, we own our own boxes as it is now, with the accept of the demolition dumpster, but, yeah, let's just, you know, baby steps here, and, but I just want to let you guys know that I, I think we're gonna try that and see how it goes.
Sarah, is there any way for it to be inside that building?
I, I'm probably gonna put it inside in the overhang out back. I mean, it is a covered dumpster, so it's not open. It's not an, it's not an open top, but, yes, for the convenience of having it, so we don't have to, we don't have to worry about a slipping hazard or, or any of that outside. If it's underneath that overhang out on the backside of the transfer station, I think we should be good.
I'm just thinking more about people not using it properly and needing some, needing to make sure people aren't coming up and throwing their trash in there on the day when the transfer station's closed.
And that's why it would be, it, the, each cupboard can be opened and padlocked.
Ah.
Individually. Yep, that's what I mean, as we, as we fill it, we'll open up a door where it can be filled, and then, you know, in the evenings, when the transfer stations close, they can be, all be padlocked right up. Yep.
Right. Good, thank you.
Yeah.
And then the highway department update, avoid, update of, as well?
Yes, so a highway update. I went and found a way to help with our CDL training, so we don't have to send a CDL new, new truck driver to school. Um, I went and got certified through the Federal Motor Carriers Association, um, and, and I worked with Todd Eaton at, at Vermont Local Roads, and I became a certified instructor, and the highway garage is now a certified, um, training facility, but it's private, so I don't have to take in out any outside clients. I can do all the training on our own employees in-house. And then I have a curriculum, so once that's all, once I've checked everything off, then we can send him to take his normal driving test as you would with the, with the DMV. So, so there's no sending them to truck driving school anymore.
That's great, Travis. Great initiative.
Yeah. Yeah.
So did that cost you to do?
No, it didn't, it, it didn't cost the town anything. It was just, I had heard wind of some other towns doing it, and I called that Todd Eaton at Vermont Local Roads, and he said, yes, people are doing this. It's working out great so far, and he, he emailed me all the information. It was, it just worked out great. So I went right on to the federal motor carriers thing, and, you know, I have to enter it into the federal motor carriers stuff as he progresses through his learning. But once so many hours are logged and I check off on it, he's good to go take his CDL test at the DMV. Yeah.
That is awesome, Travis. And.
Yep.
You are an amazing equipment operator, so I'm sure that you, you'll be trained very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate.
Yes, for sure. That's just like another little feather in your cap for being able to tell people that you can go on track for you, like you would.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks, Travis.
Wanted to give you those updates.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
All right. Have a good night.
You too.
Uh, unfinished business. We have to review, approve the Hoffer Consulting Agreement with suggested changes from the town attorney. So this is the pumping of the, the thirty-six hour pumping of the new well at the common.
Right.
And that, this was minimal. I'm glad that we did submit it to me, since.
And I have, um, I have a signed, an initial copy from Mr. Hopper indicating he's good with that. With the change striking most in that portion, so.
Is any discussion about the well contract? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, make, or you're signing it.
It's just one signature.
Okay, and make a motion that we authorize the select board chair to sign the contract with Hoffer Consulting for the thirty-six hour drawdown test on the Dover Common well.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. New business. We moved right along. Uh, question and answer period with Deerfield Valley Rescue. So Heidi reached out to say that she wanted to come in and address some of the comments that were made at town meeting or pre-town meeting about Deerfield Valley Rescue, so.
Right. Um, first of all, we always send it around, and if there's questions, you know, unfortunately, Bobby and I will both on call.
Hey, Heidi, could you?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just think you'll, we'll get better.
All right.
Here?
Yeah, that's, that's. All right. So, uh, we were on calls all day, and even one of us made it. He eventually comes to Dover, and I go to Wilmington. We didn't make either meeting, so I apologize for that. We'll try to do that this year, but who knows? Um, and Rescue is gonna celebrate its fiftieth anniversary this year. So stay tuned. We'd like to do a fundraiser kind of gala kind of thing, in October, when our anniversary is, so. So, um, the questions were basically around response times. Um, and to give a little background, Deerfield Valley Rescue has three ambulances. We house two in Wilmington and one in the Jacksonville, um, fire station, because we cover two hundred and seventy square miles about a population of, um, over eight thousand. And, um, we used to house an ambulance at the Dover Fire Station um, in hopes that we would have volunteers in the Dover area to take that out at night. And you just, we'd have one person in Dover, and you can't run an ambulance service with one person on it, so we took it out of there and brought it back to the Wilmington Station. I think now it's kind of full of firehouse. I'm not sure even if we had people that we would be able to put it back up there, but. And leaving our squad house in Wilmington, going to, for instance, Mount Snow, takes us, you know, ten to twelve minutes to do that on a good day, so response times are response times. Um, in East Dover, we are very fortunate to have the, um, fire department has a first responder agency out of it, which shows up on the scenes before we do, and can provide some care, um, and they can update us as to what's going on at the scene. Even West Dover, the fire department doesn't have that. And in Whitingham, we have that, and Halifax, we have that. It's just, it's a large area, and it's can't be everywhere all the time, so it takes time to get to some of these places. I mean, we cover all the way down to the Massachusetts border in Halifax. That's a good fifteen to twenty minutes to get there, so.
Um, do all the towns make a town municipal contribution?
They do. So we never asked for a municipal donation until, um, two thousand seventeen, when we were at, next to the health center, and the hospital wanted to expand the health center, and to do that, they needed us to leave. We had a hundred-year lease there. Um, that building was built by volunteers and didn't cost anything. It was all donated material and everything. So we had to take on the burden of a building, purchasing, and renovating, and that's when we first came to all the towns that we served to ask for a municipal donation. Yes, all the towns. Do you want, I can tell you what towns. Wilmington pays thirty thousand, West Dover does, um, Halifax and Whitingham have been asked this year for twenty thousand, which they were at fifteen. Um, Marlboro pays five. Searsburg pays two, and Stratton pays two, and that's it.
You said Halifax and who else pays fifteen?
Whitingham, that's what they're, so they now, we're asking them for twenty this year.
They're asking for twenty. Are you changing the ask on any of the other towns?
No.
Are there any questions from the public? Deerfield Valley Rescue was here and en masse, and so this is an opportunity to really, uh, if, if there's questions from the public.
I should, I should have started by introducing. Um, so, um, we have Mark Beely, he's on our board of directors, Con Rose is on the board of directors, and Marilyn Dow.
Abby, I'm your number.
So I'm normally doing my part every year to contribute, but I understand that it is per house or per household. Um, my brother is up on weekends. He's here as a regular winter seasonal, but since he doesn't reside in my house, my assumption was I couldn't, could I ask him to extend his donation and would he, because he does contribute a little bit through me, and make him a contributing member? How, how does that work? You can put him on the back of the cards. It says, everybody remembers your household, and some of these, some of the ones that we get, they have like thirty people on there, ten different last names, you know, so, and it covers your household, yes.
Okay, because I wasn't sure if that was physical or extended.
Right.
Sarah, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say you should give them lots of money.
Dan?
Last month, when I fell and cracked my head, you got there really quick. My wife is always down there, and we'll continue. I think it's a great program.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Um, anybody else have any questions? I mean, it's.
I can give you a little statistics. We did two hundred and ninety-nine calls in the town of Dover last year.
Don't you guys have a report in their town report?
We do. We did eight hundred and ninety-seven total calls, which was slightly down from the year before. Sixty-seven percent of the calls are, um, the daytime costs from state.
Does Dover represent the largest percentage of calls?
Wilmington does.
Wilmington does that even with Mount Snow.
Only by like ten, fifteen calls.
But with the Mount Snow, a lot of the, they have respond, they, you know, they have plenty of other weekends and holidays, and you guys are more of a transport on, on that period, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so ninety-five of the town report is Deerfield Valley Rescue's report this year. And we, well, we really appreciate you coming and reaching out to us. You guys are a vital service, and I encourage everybody to become intervening members. It's, it's a little bit of money, um, and it really helps so well with it.
It is. Um, we currently have five full-time employees. Um, there's, there's thirty-four people on the roster. Um, and, um, last month, out of those thirty-four people, we only had ten people signing up to do volunteer time. So, and it's just the way it's progressed, you know, like we didn't, we never did have nighttime. It was always covered by volunteers, and now seven days a week, you know, we have somebody on from six P M. to six A M. And, and then they're accompanied by a volunteer that signs up for that many. In the daytime, we have two paid staff on at all times.
Well, how often do you raise your rates per town?
Um, so, um, we had asked initially for twenty thousand from Dover. Um, I believe the second year, somebody on the floor requested an additional ten thousand for that. And so it stayed at that, I think this is the third year, at thirty thousand.
Just a point of order. I think the original ask was fifty, as, and.
Oh, was it?
Went down to thirty, because fifty was too much of a.
From the, from the.
Oh, from the floor.
Yes, yes. But, yeah, the, the electric, electric decided thirty was appropriate for that year.
Yes, I remember that. That is, uh, there's only a certain percentage you could go up.
Yeah, right. Our parliamentarians checked on that.
Anything else of Deerfield Valley Rescue tonight, besides a big thank you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your support, we appreciate it, and we will try to have some of the actions.
And if you're on a call, on calls, you're on calls. That's what you have to do. That's. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to economic development. We're gonna discuss re- restaurants for pickleball courts on the va- and the Valley Trail.
Uh, so two weeks ago, I had a meeting with Trip, who's a founding member of the Southern Ramon Pickleball Club at Farm Road Estate. He had pretty clearly where the, the town compelled to supply restaurants on the property in the form of two porta potties. Yeah. And the porta potties, uh, that would be open to our public and users of the Valley Trail. Trip gathered the information. He got two quotes of the one that he asked me to present to you as, as their request. Uh, was for eight oh two restrooms, uh, has total cost of two hundred and ninety dollars a month for the weekly service, and that includes the sales tax. Um, there's no delivery fee there, and the units are available on that property from May until November first uh, for a total of one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. One of the concerns that I expressed to Trip was just that something be done to help, you know, kind of block.
Visually shield.
Visually shield those units from three one hundred, just because we do spend quite a lot of money on beautification. So they've, they've committed to planting, uh, large shrubs in front of those units, so that it's just too glaring. Porta potties from the side room. So, uh, for a total of one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, like I said, that gets us made a member and public use, uh, absolutely agreeable to us putting a sign, a small sign on the side of the Valley Trail, pointing people to those public restaurants uh, while they're there for use. So we are in support of this. It's something, the public restroom system may be running along the trail, and if we, if we can help to cover the costs and get what we need while helping them out as well, I think it's a great thing for us.
And to be clear, the town is not, when there's something wrong with the restroom, it's tipped over, something, whatever, we are not the ones on call.
Trip, you can confirm, correct, the leases in Farm Road's name?
Eric, I think you misunderstood. I did not recommend eight oh two. There's another company called All In from Shausbury. It's actually forty dollars less a month, but more importantly, they were more local. I think eight oh two is a facade for a, a national company that has them all over. Um, they're actually out of Rochester. So, um, instead of two ninety a month, it's two fifty a month, and yes, we would have the contract with, uh, them, and we would insure them, which they require insurance, and we would do that as well.
Okay, I was confused because you said the lower of the two, and the quote from All Out is actually three hundred and eighteen dollars a month.
So that included a washroom, um, that, uh, we're not gonna put out there, because we don't have the water to, you know, to facilitate that. So I will tell you, I've talked to other businesses and towns, people, and they said in the future they would like to see a really nice facility, um, that would have washrooms and things like that, but I figure we start small and see how it goes.
Okay, so if we assume, uh, sales tax, sorry.
I don't think the number is the important issue. Two hundred and fifty dollars a month, whatever it is, if you guys are in favor of dealing with.
That's not how we do it. We make a motion for the. That's not how we do it. We make a motion for the amount it's gonna cost. And so we just wanna, we wanna have that number. Yeah.
So the, the two, sorry.
We'll go for.
Okay, uh, so the two hundred and thirty dollars a month with a six, thirty-six percent from on sales tax on that.
Or we're gonna charge seven because it's coming here.
Oh, seven.
Seven. You're starting.
So we're looking at a total then with tax of sixteen oh five. For, for the six months, one thousand six hundred and five dollars.
Um, are there other questions about the porta potties? Sarah, um, so Tripp, am I correct then, your recommendation is the All Out, not the eight oh two?
Yes.
Okay, and that two fifty a month, does that include the weekly servicing as well?
Yes.
Okay, and is there, um, any provision made for if we get an early winter where, you know, mid-October, where, is there a certain amount of snow at which you would say, we need to get these things out before they won't be able to get them out?
To be honest with you, Sarah, I haven't asked that question.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering if they're gonna get frozen in place if we get a really big lump in October.
And if that's the case, I would be glad to ask those questions.
I don't think it's a deal breaker. It's just curiosity.
So I do have the quote from All Out. Like I said, there was a bit of confusion just because of the, he said the lower cost, so.
It sounds pretty, like, we understand what's going on. It's applesauce. Does somebody want to make a motions? Or you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say that I appreciate, I think that getting these on the Valley Trail and I was not having, uh, assume control of them is awesome. I think it's just like a little, and appreciate you going like the lower cost, so. It's all good.
So I make a motion that we.
I have some questions. You can make.
Yeah, you can make a motion.
Make the motion, that's fine.
Oh, wait, no, okay, I make a motion that we, um, provide, that we, um, pay for, uh, two porta potties, um, supplied by All Out from Shaftesbury, total amount of sixteen oh five, which is two fifty a month for six months. So.
So.
Okay, Joe?
Okay, so a little bit of discussion. Um, just in case this arrangement doesn't work, I would prefer to be paying it monthly, not a full amount. Um, also, I assume that the porta potties are gonna be somewhere where folks can reach them from the Valley Trail, seeing we're paying the expense for them. And also that we can advertise and let people know that they are there and available for folks. So I just wanna make sure that that's in the agreement before we move forward, because I don't want any, uh, situation where we're, all of a sudden, it's not, and we just paid for the whole thing, so I'd prefer to pay it monthly. Uh, this is a test trial, just like everyone said, as opposed to, uh, going that way, so I, I, as we have Tripp here, I would assume that he can answer those questions for me and the board.
So Joe, um, are you familiar with the property we're talking about?
Excuse me? You, to ask questions, you have to ask, raise your hand, Tripp?
He, I thought he asked me a direct question.
Well, that all goes through me, so. So what's your question or your response?
So my question is, Joe, are you familiar with the property we're talking about?
Uh, and so, Vicky, I'm very familiar with it.
Okay, so there's a driveway that's there right now, Joe. You'd walk straight up, and it's about fifty-eight feet across to where they are. We would, again, I think, uh, Eric told you, we would within Tabitha's means, show that there are public restrooms. You absolutely could and should advertise it. Um, and there is no situation where they will be impeded in any way, shape, or means. And the whole reason I've done this is because I've got so many clients up and down the road that complain that there aren't any public restrooms, especially since Seven to Eleven closed their bathroom up. Um, so, yeah, and again, we're, we're willing to do, if you're not comfortable with something, we'll work it out, but there'll be in a spot that's easy accessible.
Sarah, the two fifty quote that you were giving, was, was that presuming a six-month contract, or is that a month-to-month price?
So it's month-to-month, and we were gonna start Memorial Day and go through October at this point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't gonna cost more if we were trying to change the term.
No, so it's two fifty a month. And we're not gonna be open until really end of May. Um, going forward, we hope to be open April fifteenth through end of October anyways.
So, I mean, the the organ, the people who are putting this in could pay for the whole thing, and then we could reimburse them on a monthly basis, if that makes you feel better, Joe.
That, that, that would make me feel better. The other thing too is, uh, I, I'm assuming Tripp is a, a representative for the owners of the property, because the change of ownership hasn't occurred that I know of, it's still, um, so all the information we're getting is correct. It's, um, Farm Road Estates that owns the property, and it's kind of putting this together with Tripp, so I just wanna make sure that's in public that we made this agreement, so nothing changes. That's all. That's my concern.
So Farm Road Estates is leasing the property to Southern Vermont Pickleball LLC, and I am a member with Mike Leveque on that.
Okay, that makes more sense now. Okay, thank you for, for clarifying.
Tabby.
Yeah, equal partners.
Excuse me, I called on Tabby. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, I heard Tripp mention insurance for parts. The insurance on these units, porta potty units, covered in that monthly rate?
Tripp, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, so, um, Southern Vermont Pickleball LLC is covering the facility and will give a certificate of insurance to the Shaftesbury folks, All In, um, which they require, um, naming them as additional insured.
Any other questions?
Do I need to revise the motion for a pay and balance?
I think that that would be probably, so if you wanna retract.
So, well, I would like to, I would like to amend my motion that the, we will be paying a total of one thousand six hundred and five dollars in monthly increments of two hundred and fifty.
Second.
Plus tax.
Plus tax, excuse me, plus tax. And so you, so I can resecond that, okay? Anything else about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Next, we're gonna talk about the parking lot plowing for the town park in Horace Hill. Eric?
Okay, so last year, we, uh, worked with Mr. Kaplan to help cover some of the expenses of plowing the parking uh, that, that he graciously allows us to use for the town park, as well as Horace Hill. Uh, he's come back this year and, and asked for some of that help again, a total what I'd like to see us pay him is thirteen hundred dollars to help cover those expenses, or some of those expenses. His total bill for the, the properties is four thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars, plus an additional three hundred and thirty-five dollars each time one of those lots needs to be sanded. Uh, so I think, you know, given his uh, hospitality and, and working so well with us, I mean, in terms of staging for the project, and Horace Hill's staging for the project that was on the bridge, and, and having those lots open and available for you, for the concerts, as well as, you know, plus what's gonna be happening on Horace Hill. I think that's more than a three-able to, that would, would have found costs, um, especially as some of the uses on those properties appear.
That lot at the bottom of Horace Hill has been very busy, um, with people who are obviously accessing the, the trails already, and then, of course, in the summer, during, particularly during concerts, the, uh, the ones out back by the, the park is also very, very busy. So I, I have no issues with.
I make a motion that we authorize payment of one, of thirteen hundred dollars to, uh, Richard Kaplan toward, to contribute towards the plowing and sanding costs for the lots on one eighty-three and one seventy-one, Route one hundred.
So they can. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Yes.
When you see those come through the warrants, they're split between the two properties.
Because they're on two separate parcels. All right, we need to go to the Board of Liquor Control. Motion to the Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have. Thank you, Joe. First and third class licenses and outside consumption, consumption permit for KPLC Inc., D B A, West Dover End.
I make a motion that we, oh, Mike. Make a motion that we approve the first and third class license and outside consumption permit for KPLC Inc., D B A, West Dover End.
Second. Any discussion at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the second class license for Stone Mountain Market.
Second. All good there? All in favor?
Aye. Motion from out of the Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have, we have the consent agenda, um, from, approve the minutes from, sorry, the consent agenda, approve the minutes from February sixth. No. I have them, that's right here. Scott with that, so.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February sixth.
Second.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we are to approve the warrants. A lot of it is school, one point nine million is school, uh, of February seventeenth, uh, in the amount, an amount of two million, one hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents.
I make a motion to approve the warrants of February seventeenth for two million, one hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Okay, FYI, the planning commission meets February twenty sixth.
What? Uh, Joe hasn't seen the warrants, so.
Oh, Joe, you can't vote?
No. No.
So, so four oh one.
Okay. Uh, the, then we have planning commission meets February twenty-sixth at six thirty, pre-town meeting, February twenty-seven at six at the Dover Town Hall. Town meeting is March fifth at ten A M. Voting is from seven A M. to seven P M. Reorganizational meeting, March sixth at six thirty P M. Dogging Cat Clinic, March, Saturday, March sixteenth at ten A M. at the East Dover to noon, the East Dover Fire Department. And the town plan public meeting is March twenty-fifth, six thirty P M. at the Dover Town Hall. Anybody have anything more to add to that packed list?
I'm feeling.
Liaison reports? None? Executive session? What?
From the library.
Yeah?
Liaison report, just, uh, the library is hopefully gonna attend the pre-town meeting, but they definitely, they're not there. They will be at town meeting to speak. And, uh, I believe our librarian, our head high librarian will speak to the public at town meeting, hopefully.
Awesome. That's right.
About their latest meeting, everything's moving forward. A lot of good things have been happening. They also want to do possibly some, a little bit of freshening up the front entranceway, making that look a little brighter and a little bit, not from the nineteen fifties, without doing too much, but they'll let us know what they plan to do, different things, so, just, just a couple of things.
Great, thanks for doing that. Thanks for reporting, Joe.
Hmm.
Executive session, anybody have anything that we need? Hearing none? Like to adjourn our meeting at seven fourteen P M.
Look at us.